Hey Candlewood, it's Jonathan Klug here. I know I look a good bit different tucked behind this beard, but it's me. I guess these are different times. I hope everyone's doing well and I just wanted to take the time to address some questions that were proposed to me from Candlewood Lake Administration in regards to running for the Board this year. So question number one is what are your favorite things about Candlewood Lake community? And how does this impact your desire to be on the Board? I guess looking back, I mean it's probably been 15 years ago. My wife and I first visited Candlewood and we just absolutely fell in love with it. We thought that it was a place that was active, you know, promoted being outside, being healthy, and really engaging in kind of the outdoor lifestyle and we just loved it. And I think it's a rare and really unique situation when you can make an investment in something, in this case a home or a community, and just really be able to share it with your family and friends and kind of, I guess, promote the joy and happiness that this place brings. So it's definitely been a good investment for us on all fronts and we've just really enjoyed our time here and, you know, made a lot of great friends. And I think my goal has been, or my goal, you know, for running for the Board three years ago was really to ensure that this place is a safe and fun environment for all to enjoy. I mean, that's definitely the goal. But obviously I'm looking out for protecting all of our investments. I kind of look at you, the community, as shareholders in all this and obviously we have an obligation to do the right thing for the community. So it's definitely been a blessing for us. Question number two, what is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood? And will you be able to give your time as a trustee to attend meetings and fulfill these roles and obligations? Yeah, I mean, I think the role of the Board of the Trustees is, really comes down to having a fiduciary duty to its members and ultimately shareholders. And I think the goal is to steer the organization towards a sustainable and prosperous future. Like, we all want this place to be here for years to come, for, you know, your children, your grandchildren to enjoy. And I think that's the overall goal for all of us. I don't think the Board's duties are to run the organization. I think that falls back on management and the office and the general manager. I think we do have a duty to be fiscally responsible and ultimately conservative with the community's money, which is, at the end of the day, all of your money. So that's how I feel about that. Question number three, what from your previous Candlewood Lake involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or background experiences lends you to, lends itself to the role as a trustee? So I would just say that I've had the pleasure of being on the Board for the past three years. It's really been an eye-opening experience for me. I think there's a lot of behind-the-scenes details that most people don't realize in regards to, you know, what it takes to run this place or manage this place. And to be honest, I really didn't have a true appreciation for it before I became a Board member. So I respect what, you know, everyone's doing at all levels. I think everyone's working hard towards a common goal. But I think, you know, now more than ever, especially in these COVID times, we need strong leadership and we need strong leadership on all fronts. And I think, you know, if you look at that or really dig into it, we're talking about office personnel, so administrative, security committees, which is all of you, the community, and at the end of the day, the Board of Trustees to make decisions on behalf of the community. Professionally, you know, I work for a medical device company. I'm responsible for the cardiac electrophysiology business for the state of Ohio. And really, it's my job and duty to bring technological advancements to the people of Ohio in terms of mapping and navigation and ablation for cardiac arrhythmias. So it's a lot of responsibility, it's a big role, but I have a large clinical team that assists me with treating patients. So it's been good. I think we've been able to do a lot of good things for the people of Ohio. Question number four, what strengths, weaknesses do you see in your current governance? No names, please. And how would you keep improving these strengths and weaknesses? It's kind of an interesting question and to be honest, like, I'm not here to point the finger. I think the community basically needs to focus on three key things moving forward. Again, especially in these times, I think it's going to be a bit different for a while. And really, to me, what it comes down to is strong leadership, that's number one, again, at all levels, accountability, and really execution. Like, you have to have a plan and you have to be able to execute upon that plan to be able to accomplish something and make things happen at the end of the day. I mean, I think we all want to see this place progress and evolve into just a fun and, you know, active place to be. And again, that's kind of always been my goal. So question number five, how would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to the governance of our community? So I think, you know, we've seen a lot of this unfortunately, but it's okay. I mean, people can agree to disagree. However, everyone must be respectful of their neighbor and, you know, the other members of the community. And again, for me, this type of thing just comes back to strong leadership. We need to be able to bring people together, not force them apart. And we also need to hear one's voice, but then be able to make decisions based on facts and not biased opinions. I think, you know, we've definitely seen some of that in the past. So that's how I would handle that question. I just want to tell all of you, I appreciate your time. I hope you have a good summer. Stay safe and take care of yourself out there. Take care. Thanks, guys. Bye.
Hello, my name is Ned Lust and I live at Unit 7, Lot 165 with my wife Charlotte. We have been full-time residents at Candlewood for almost 10 years. For members that don't know me, we live on the lake with the floating dock named Rum Runners Cove and have the water cannon.
What are your favorite things about Candlewood Lake community? And how does it impact your desire to be on the Board?
Like most people, my favorite thing about Candlewood Lake is the lake, the amenities, and the people of the community. The reason I want to serve the members of Candlewood Lake is simple, to make Candlewood even better. I also have a daughter Courtney, son-in-law Zach, and granddaughter Sarah-in-law that are also full-time Candlewood residents as well.
What is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood? And will you be able to give the time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
First and foremost, a Board of Trustee is to be the voice of the members of Candlewood, all members and all units. Candlewood is owned by each and every member and your voice needs to be heard. I attend most of the Board meetings and many of the committee meetings, so I have no problem making the time to fulfill my obligations as a trustee. When was the last time a Board member personally asked you your thoughts or opinions about Candlewood Lake? I promise that I will answer all emails and phone calls, not always have any answer, but always willing to listen to your concerns.
What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, CWL volunteer work, and/or your background experience would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
I have served on the ECC and maintenance committee and I have attended many other committee meetings at Candlewood Lake over the past nine years. I also have 46 years of engineering experience and the last 20 has been with Kokosin Construction Company. My engineering experience will help with many Candlewood Lake projects, including infrastructure, water, wastewater, roads, bridges, and buildings, and our most valuable asset, the dam. I will use my engineering skills to provide value engineering and obtain competitive bids on all of our major projects.
What strengths or weaknesses do you see in our current Board? And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
The Board has many strengths, but they also have some weaknesses. Our greatest weakness is the lack of communication with the membership. We also need more diversity on our committees. We have too many like-minded people serving on multiple committees. I also think that the new Chronicle needs to have the Board meeting minutes published each month because this is the main method of communicating with the majority of the membership. Last, I would like to see term limits for Board members so that we get fresh and innovative thinking each year.
How would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to governance of our community?
This is an easy question. I would like to see major issues decided by a majority vote by the members of Candlewood. None of us are as smart as all of us. Again, I believe in democracy and the majority rules. With the members, all own a part of Candlewood, not just the elected Board of Trustees. I also realize that the Board cannot let the membership decide everything and this is why the Board needs to communicate with the membership, something we are currently lacking. If you have any questions, please call me at 419-569-0890. Stay safe, vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I want to introduce John and then we'll let him say a couple of words before we get started with the questions. And John, I'll turn it over to you.
My name's John McFarland. We are at Unit 10, Lot 42. My wife and I purchased here in October of 2018. We've been involved with the community, doing different things with committees and work groups. And so this is my first attempt at running for the Board and look forward to serving the community.
Okay, John, first question, what are your favorite things about Candlewood Lake community? And how does this impact your desire to be on the Board?
My favorite thing is the people. I just, I love listening to everyone. I love to understand how the lake came about, how different things have come about with the lake. I feel my number one thing is I love to serve. I want to serve people. And I feel if I'm put on the Board, that I want to understand everybody's viewpoints and where they stand and be able to help in any way I can.
Awesome. What is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood? And will you be able to give the time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
I feel the role is that we are here to serve the membership. We are here to look at every angle, every option that we possibly can. As far as the time, when we closed on our property, I immediately contacted a Board member, Greg Atkins, and met with him to get involved with the finance committee, which led me then to long-range planning. I've been on two work groups. I feel my time is dedicated to here. I've owned my own business now for 28 years. I'm to the position where I can spend a little more time outside the business. So my extra time that I have, I'm up here at Candlewood.
What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or your background experiences would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
I feel the most important thing you can do as a member is to get involved with a committee. I just feel that is, it's a must. If you're not involved, I feel you literally are just behind the curve on understanding what's happening on a day-to-day basis here. My involvement, as I had said, I've been involved with two committees, finance committee, long-range planning, and two different work groups. I've learned so much that it's given me the opportunity to understand how the lake works, the differences in people and their viewpoints and their perceptions. And I just want to understand everybody's insight in order to help the lake maintain and to grow.
Good deal. What strengths and weaknesses do you see in our current governance? No names, please. And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
I feel with the present Board that we have, we, there are differences that are there, which I think is a plus. I feel that a Board that everybody disagrees with what everyone says is not serving the community at all. So I'd like to see that there's disagreements that take place. I like to see very positive discussions. One of the things that I think happens in the community is people's perception with communication. And I feel communication just has to be the number-one target that we hit to make sure that everyone in the community understands and everything is 100% transparent.
Beautiful. Last question, how would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to the governance of our community?
So going back to the perception, everybody has a perception. I feel the number-one thing that you need to do is to understand where the member is coming from, the differences between the two members. Are these falling in line with what the present bylaws are and how they're written to make sure that we are understanding that? I'm not wanting to get on the Board to have an agenda or to pick one side or the other. I just want to do what the membership wants to do as a whole.
Fantastic. Anything you'd like to summarize, say to the membership before we wrap up?
Yeah. My wife and I, Cheryl, have been here a very short time. We've spent a lot of time on the lake. We presently do not have a house here. We're in the process of starting the building process with the lake. I love listening to people's insight. I want to grow from that. The thing that I love about the lake is there are people that live in all different areas of it, and yet the number-one thing is they care about Candlewood Lake. And that's what I want to see to grow with. I want to be able to be a part of it. I want to be able to help people to understand things better if things are not to what they're thinking. And I want to see more people get involved. I want to see more people come into committee meetings. I want to see more people come into work groups and just everybody work together to take what now is a beautiful thing and just allow it to grow.
Fantastic. Okay, Darryl, I'm going to turn this over to you to say a few words before we get started with the interview questions. And at the end of it, I'll give you a chance to summarize. So I'll let you introduce yourself.
My name is Darryl Young. I've been a Candlewood resident for 12 years. Obviously, never experienced anything quite like the Corona situation. That's why I'm wearing an ace mask and gloves to protect everyone today, in addition to just going along with our governor's rulings. So in that, I have a daughter and a son. My daughter is 10 months old, my son is three years old, and we live over on Talladega Drive.
Good deal. Okay, first question, what are your favorite things about the Candlewood Lake community? And how does this impact your desire to be on the Board?
The serenity and atmosphere here at Candlewood are what attracted my wife and I. I want to maintain that feeling here and also ensure that we can keep it for years to come. I feel that my service on the Board will have a positive contribution to enhance the governance and operations of Candlewood.
Good deal. Next question, what is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood? And will you be able to give the time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
Candlewood is a membership. I want to act as a member to help represent and include all of the other members in whatever manner they wish to participate. I intend to fulfill all of my obligations and will make time accordingly.
Perfect. What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or your background experiences would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
I've lived in Candlewood for over 12 years. I'm familiar with the operations and legislation of the community. I have volunteered my services in several capacities to Candlewood. As an engineer with a master's degree in business, I have thorough experience in operations of organizations and facilities management. Those two functions consume a great deal of what Candlewood does. And so I feel, you know, my contribution as a Board member, whether it be through volunteering my direct services or enhancing the governance of Candlewood, would be a positive contribution.
Awesome. Okay, next question, what strengths or weaknesses do you see in our current governance? No names, please. And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
I've had the privilege of working and interfacing with most of the current Board members. I think there are many Board members that have a great passion for the success of this community. I look forward to working with them and continue to improve and adapt the community, even in times like these where we're dealing with things that we've never experienced before. I'm happy to serve and lead as necessary.
Awesome. Last question, how would you handle contrasting views of our members when it comes to the governance of our community?
I recently participated in the voting rule work group and I feel as if the survey that was emailed out was a good step forward in understanding the viewpoints of the membership. I would like to expand on that to ensure those that want their voices to be heard get heard. We should recognize the majority of the membership because those are the values that our community was established on.
Good job. Okay, anything you would like to add or summarize the interview that you would like to share with the association?
No, I just, I just hope that people, you know, vote with who they feel will best represent them. And I feel that overall, we are a membership, we are all equal members, and I want to continue to work as a Board member to ensure that all members feel that they're equally represented.
Perfect. Okay.
Hello, I'm Kevin McCray, candidate for the Board of Trustees here at Candlewood Lake. Been a resident here with my wife Gail since November of 2013. We live in Unit 7 and we're at Lots 72, 73.
Okay, the first question, what are your favorite things about the Candlewood Lake community and how does this impact your desire to be on the Board?
Well, when we started looking for properties in the fall of 2013 and we came to Candlewood for the first time, we were just really captured by the beauty of the setting, the trees, of course, the lake. And then as we toured around and looked at different properties, we saw the lodge and the amenities that came with the lodge. We thought, boy, this would be a great place to live for the next few years. And I was still working at that time and it has proven to be that. And on top of that, we've learned that the people here are just terrific. We really enjoy our neighbors and the community activities.
Fantastic. Couldn't agree more. Next question, what is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood? And will you be able to give that time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
Well, I think any Board has an obligation to be responsive to the people that it serves and also to provide oversight to the management of the operation that does the day-to-day work of the organization. I think fundamentally, when a Board has responsibility to make a decision, they need to understand what's the situation, get some background on that situation, do an assessment of the conditions, alternatives that are possible, and then take an action from that point. In other words, try to get as much information as you can, make an informed decision, and move forward and be confident in your action. As far as my ability to work with others, that's what I did for 32 years, is I worked with Boards, not only as a member of a Board, but a leader of a Board, but also the Boards of the organization that employed me for 30-some years. Was there a second part to that question? I may have left that.
Thank you. I think you got it.
Okay.
Good job. What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or your background experiences would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
Well, I've been a member of the Utilities Committee for about, I think, 15 months now. When I retired at the end of '17, I was still providing a lot of care for my mom who lived down in Reynoldsburg. Making that trip down there three days a week really absorbed a lot of my time. So I didn't want to overcommit to any activity that I could be involved with here at Candlewood. But Utilities has been a good outlet for me to learn not only about the Utilities operation, which are an important aspect of what Candlewood provides to the residents, but in those conversations, you learn a lot more about Candlewood itself. Not officially a member of the Community Events Committee, but through my wife and I, we've helped out a lot there and met all the great people and seen the great activities that they do. And I'm now on this search committee that's being formed to provide a successor for the general manager's position, the Tim Fills, and I'm sure I'll learn a lot more from that. As far as a commitment, you know, having been on Boards previously and having run Boards for organizations, the thing is, is that if you're going to make a commitment, make the commitment, fulfill it, show up, be prepared, participate, ask questions. I think the biggest rule for any Director of any organization is ask questions, ask questions, ask questions.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. What strengths and weaknesses do you see in our current governance? Please, no names. And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
You know, I can't say that I can identify any weakness from the Board perspective. I've always felt like, and that's what I used to tell my employees, my coworkers, is never criticize a volunteer until you've been a volunteer. So I don't have any criticism of the Board. I do have praise for this Board, the current governance of the organization. I think they've done a great job. They've probably been building on the work that was done before them. I would like to be able to contribute to that even going forward, doing all the more for the residents here at Candlewood. So I think their strength is, is that they've been willing to step up, take the bull by the horns and run with it. Financial issues, I know, have been a concern and that's an area that they seem to have put a lot of attention to. And I'm impressed by the work that the Board's been doing the last several years that I've been really here to pay attention to.
Good deal. Last question, how would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to the governance of our community?
Jeez, many people have different opinions.
Imagine that.
I, when I was working, my last employment job, we had four different membership constituencies that were completely different in their makeup in terms of the professions. And then we had another constituency of state associations around the country. All of them had different viewpoints as to what the national organization should be doing for them. From that, I think I've learned the lesson of, again, you know, listening, ask questions, listen some more, ask questions, and then try to take all that information input and massage it into some ideas for possible outcomes that would meet the needs of all those people. You know, sometimes you have ideas and they don't pan out, but you have to have ideas and be willing to try things. And I think that comes from having the thick skin to listen to people who don't agree with you, but to take the heart of what they're saying and try to put it into a positive outcome that benefits everybody or as many people as possible.
Good deal. Now, with the end of the questions, anything you want to add to summarize or comment?
No, I think I've said what I believe. And like I said in the application, I don't have an agenda coming here as a Director, a candidate, or trustee candidate, other than to do what I can to contribute to make Candlewood an even better place to live than it's been in the six and a half years that we've been here.
I would like to introduce Charlotte Brown and I'm going to let her actually do her own introduction.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Brown and my husband and I live at Unit 10, Lot 12. And we bought here about three years ago and we're part-timers and we've enjoyed it so much that we are moving here full-time as of May 7th. So we're very excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, first question, Charlotte, what are your favorite things about the Candlewood Lake community? And how does this impact your desire to be on the Board?
Well, we came here for the lake, and we still love the lake, but we're staying in here full-time because of the people. The Candlewood community is simply amazing. It is not only friendly, it's really welcoming, and I think that's a large part to the tone set by the board, and I would like to be part of the inspiration to others to feel the sense of inclusion.
Awesome. Okay, second question. What is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood, and will you be able to give the time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
Well, I'm retired, so yes, I do have the time, and I'm willing to spend it on this. And as far as the role of the board, the board not only sets the tone, their number-one priority, I feel, is that they protect property values here at the lake. And that's done not only by maintaining the facilities that are owned by the organization, but also by seeing that members maintain their property appropriately, utilities are maintained, roads, everything. I mean, we couldn't live here without what the board does. And what was the rest of my... okay, and I feel that I can assist with that process, so.
Awesome. Perfect. Okay. What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or your background experiences would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
Well, admittedly, I have not been involved on any committees. I have attended a lot of the social events and hosted desserts for the Progressive Dinner for two years, and I have attended general membership meetings. But in a past life, I was part of a very active homeowners association, and most notably, we had a very explosive situation arise. It was mandated that we incorporate commercial properties within our residential neighborhood, and it created huge divisions within the neighborhood. We straddled two municipalities. They had conflicting zoning requirements, and we had some, well, at least one very unreasonable neighbor. And yet, by working together and very diligently pursuing compromises on both sides, it was really compromise, we managed to pull it together and reach an acceptable solution. So hopefully, Candlewood will never face such a dire divisive situation, but if it does, I'd like to be on hand to help get through that.
Fantastic. Next question. What strengths or weaknesses do you see in our current governance? No names, please. And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
Well, the board is really taking a business approach to Candlewood, and that's very important because Candlewood Lake is a $2.5 million business. And apparently, in the past, that wasn't the case because the reserves aren't in place, and they would be if business approach had been taken of long. So that's very, very good. Additionally, the long-range financial planning, the long-range plan for the development that has included the membership, I think those are both excellent, and I'm sure the board has plans to continue those. The weaknesses, I think, are primarily in the collections area and in uniform enforcement of the rules. And I am neither a procrastinator nor a conflict avoider, and I would be happy to work in those areas to see that we get those more in line.
Good deal. Charlie, last question. How would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to the governance of our community?
The most important thing initially is to make sure that each person has an opportunity for their view to be heard. That's not meaning that they will all be weighed equally because not all views necessarily make any sense, but everybody needs to be heard, and then once everyone is heard, you need to really look and see what the real issue is, because sometimes what people say the issue is, isn't actually the key issue. And then we need to look and see if government regulations in any way impact the decision, if existing rules within the community here at Candlewood impact the decision, and ultimately, what is best for the majority of people who live here and what will most benefit all individuals in every unit here at Candlewood. And then it's on to compromise and come up with a solution that not everyone's going to like, but hopefully everyone will respect.
Good job. That is the end of the questions. Is there anything, Charlie, you would like to add in summary to share with the association?
I would really look forward to working with you folks on the board and on behalf of all the members here at Candlewood, and for those of you I haven't met, I look forward to meeting you in the not-too-distant future. Thank you for your consideration.
Jim, I'm going to turn this over to you to kind of introduce yourself, and then we'll run through the questions.
Okay.
To summarize at the end.
Very good. My name is Jim Reedier. I have been a Candlewood resident with my wife Pat since 2014. We moved out here permanently in 2015. Both of us have been involved in the community. My wife's on the Community Events Committee, and I'm on the facilities or the maintenance, the security, and the finance committees. We both like living out here. It's a great place to live. And with that, I'll lend myself to any of the questions you may have in the future. Just contact me by email, and I will respond to you as well.
Okay, very good. First question. What are your favorite things about the Candlewood Lake community, and how does this impact your desire to be on the board?
As I said earlier, the thing we enjoy the most out here are the people. The people out here are just fantastic. We've met some very, very good friends in the short time we've been out here. Obviously, the most important thing about Candlewood is the lake, which is something we enjoy because we have two sons and three grandsons. They certainly enjoy the lake, and it's close enough for them to come out here and visit when it's available. And what I really want to do on the board is continue to make Candlewood a good place to live for everybody. Oftentimes, there are disagreements, and I think I can help solve some of those disagreements.
Awesome. Okay, next question. What is your view on the role of the Board of Trustees in the governance of Candlewood, and will you be able to give the time that many of our trustees do to attend meetings and fulfill these role obligations?
Well, the role of a Board of Trustees is to represent the members in governing the association for the betterment of everyone. I have no doubt that I can help in that regard in reference to making sure that we listen to these members when there is something that needs to be changed or altered, and to do that change or alteration in the best possible way. As far as attending meetings, the minimum is to attend one board meeting a month. That, to me, is a very, very low bar. I would like to attend at least two or three other committee meetings. I think it's important for the Board of Trustee to be on more than one committee. When he or she is on those committees, they lend a perspective to the volunteers that are on those committees as to what the board is doing and the direction they're going, the financials picture at the time. So it's important that the board represent themselves on committees, and oftentimes, the committees are there without that. That leads to a committee that's kind of leaderless.
Good job. What from your previous Candlewood involvement on committees, Candlewood Lake volunteer work, and/or your background experiences would lend itself to your role as a trustee?
Well, the last year, a couple of years, I've been on the maintenance committee. I've also served on the Supercoast Security Committee and also the Finance Committee. So I do know a little bit about the financial background of the organization. I do know a little bit about the backbone of the Security Department and the changes that they've gone through, and the maintenance area as far as things that need to be done, and prioritize those based on the availability of the budget and those types of things. My background, I've served mostly in the financial service industry. My last position was president and CEO of CME Credit Union in Columbus, and CME is a financial cooperative, which means that we do have boards of directors. They're volunteers, and they represent the, in our case, we have over 30,000 members, so they represent the views of the membership as far as setting interest rates, policies, and those types of things. I was involved intimately with all of those decisions.
Good deal. Okay, what strengths or weaknesses do you see in our current governance? No names, please. And how can you help to keep improving these strengths and weaknesses?
As I said earlier, I think one of the most important things is for every board member to become involved with more than one committee. In the past, in the short time I've been here, I've seen the success of those committees when there's an active board member on that committee. Again, he or she lends a perspective to the volunteers that the volunteers normally would not have because they are not at the board meetings or the executive sessions.
Okay, good job. Last question. How would you handle contrasting views of members when it comes to the governance of our community?
The association is a unique entity because it is made up of all the homeowners. So when something is going to change or be implemented, it's important that as many homeowners that want to be heard and be listened to. Oftentimes, that's not been the case, or they've attempted to listen to them, but then have put it aside and gone a different direction. To me, that is not the way to handle a situation. When the issue is controversial, at the minimum, it should be attended to by at least two board meetings. One to discuss it, a second to listen to the member's input, and even possibly a third to react or act to that particular issue. Listening is so important, but at the end of the day, you do have to make a decision, and that decision will not always please every member, but it's important to, as a Board of Trustee, make sure that your viewpoint and your vote is for the betterment of the community at large.
Awesome. Okay, is there anything you'd like to add at the end to kind of summarize this interview?
This is the second time I've run for the board. I ran last year, and I lost by two points or two votes. I'm hoping that's not the case this year, but if there are any questions or issues that you would like to discuss, please email me at my email address, JPReedier@icloud.com, and I'll respond to your issues. And if there is a need for further meetings, I will certainly meet with you as needed. Thank you, and I hope I have your vote.